Option two because I know somebody who's been in business for twenty years and was looking for a facility in Craig. And that was like one of my first options, but the school had just hit us with needing a pace facility. Um, so we'll try to get onto some in kind or.
It's not that we can't. I mean, and again, we don't have an agreement with the school district, right? It was one phone call looking for space. That right now is the only space that looks like it would fit and only if the council made the decision tonight to transition the other space. So I still have to have some discussions with the school district about whether they want to do it or not. And if not, I'm happy to bring back some discussion about advertising for lease proposals or something.
Are you want to have that discussion with Jackie before the next meeting?
I don't know. Because I don't know that they know yet.
Oh.
I've only had one discussion with the pace teacher. I haven't had any discussions on that particular subject with Jackie yet.
Oh.
And so I don't know if Jackie's working on some other space or has other ideas or uh so I don't know. I don't know if I'm going to be able to bring up what next meeting or not.
All right, do more discussion. All those in favor of option two?
Hi.
All right, thank you. Moving on to city of Craig budget discussion.
Mr. Mayor, just uh we are kind of running up into the budget. I really don't need any action from the council on this tonight. Uh just, I wanted to catch the council up on kind of where we're at with the budget work. We're going to start meeting in earnest with the budget committee, both to meet with departments, to talk through capital budgets and to start going through the operating budget. We've met with all of the department managers. And so we have their list of budget requests for the year. Kimber's still putting the draft budget document together, so I'm not sure where we're at. I think we're going to have to trim some, but uh not significantly. The revenues don't look significantly up, but they look healthy from last year. Um, we're looking at a two and a half percent COLA uh across the board for employees based on the consumer price index change over the past twelve months. Um, we're also looking at um last year during budget committee meetings, the budget committee indicated wanting to make sure that the enterprise funds kept up, had some inflation proofing based on the CPI, so we'd be at least a two and a half percent increase to utilities. I think I'm going to suggest to the council, uh to the budget committee, when we start the discussions, an additional five percent. We do have increased costs, um largely associated with the enterprise department, so uh rate increases would not be out of line again this year. Um, the school district, there's just some rough discussion. You know, they're trying to keep up with school district numbers is nearly impossible. I haven't checked the legislature's actions today. Um, when we were in June or in February, uh both the House and the Senate were talking about six hundred and eighty dollars. There's a bill in the House that would have increased the BSA by a thousand dollars this year and four hundred dollars each of the next two years. Um, but the real discussion was about six hundred and eighty dollars per student, which is the amount that they did last year. I guess they have kind of revised the House bill now and they're looking at maybe a thousand dollar increase this year.
Increase to a thousand or going to be a sixteen hundred and eighty dollar BSA?
Well, a thousand dollar increase to the current BSA.
So it'll be sixteen hundred and eighty dollars.
No, no, the BSA is much higher than that. The BSA is five or six thousand dollars per student.
Wow.
Um, the six hundred and eighty dollars was a one-time increase last year.
Yeah.
That what they're talking about this year is a thousand dollar. It would not, oh, so it's last year was a one-time increase as well. It was not part of the formula. So that six hundred and eighty dollars is gone. Forget completely about that. So if they do a thousand dollar either increase to the BSA or one-time increase, it will only be the thousand dollars. Um, but they're stuck at the same place that they have been or one of the same places. They've made more concessions to the governor's priorities, so there's more of a chance that the governor's going to sign a bill. However, um even with no increase to the BSA, there's a two hundred and fifty million dollar deficit or with a six, I think there was a small increase to the BSA and a thirteen hundred dollar dividend still left a two hundred and fifty million dollar budget deficit. And so a thousand dollar BSA, I don't know how they're going to pay for it, right? You start subtracting money from the permanent fund side or or other departments, so we'll see how it turns out. From the city side, um based on sales tax revenue over the past twelve years, um we're estimating that uh the additional sales tax will raise about seven hundred thousand dollars in the next fiscal year. Um, as the council knows, the National Forest Receipts Program's not been reauthorized. I've still not been able to get an answer as to whether there's one last check coming or not. Uh, I haven't seen it yet. This is the time of year we usually see that check. Um, but there's, um after we subtract the match for the school renovation project, there's enough in the reserves to replace the NFR check for the next two years. And then that reserve runs out. So just using those two items, the additional sales tax and drawing about a half a million dollars from the reserve account would put us at about um would put us at a contribution of of somewhere in the neighborhood of one point one, one point two million dollars. It's it's possible. We don't know what the numbers will be yet this year, but of course this year, the additional sales tax was not budgeted. Um, but it was effective the first of January. So we will have a couple hundred thousand dollars of sales tax collected this year for the school that we can try and project and also add to the local contribution. But it's going to be tough getting to the same commitment of one point six million dollars that we did last year. And so uh the school district is working on their budget. Um, they're moving right along with it. I had a nice conversation with superintendent the other day. Their budget committee is uh is working away and um we don't have a date yet, but I'll be sending out a draft of their budget and uh some potential dates for the joint city council, school board, budget workshop here hopefully in the next couple of weeks, so we can get that done. Um, again, we're going to start scheduling a pretty uh pretty aggressive schedule of budget committee meetings, uh both again for departments to share the importance of their capital projects to help decide which make it through and which don't, I guess, and also to talk about changes to their operating budgets that they're looking for this year. And so I know we've got some, we've got budget committee members appointed, but I'm going to tell you now, we're going to be looking for a fair number of meetings in a fairly short time, so I'm gonna, I would like to give the council another chance to find out who all is interested in being on the budget committee and jumping into this over the next month.
We have a time, about what time will be meeting, Brian?
Time of day, you mean?
Yeah.
Uh, it's really open. Traditionally, we've done budget committee meetings starting at four o'clock so that it's kind of allowed some staff time overlap, but I think we did them. Did we do them later last year?
We did them later because I I couldn't make it.
Yeah, so I think we did them at five or something last year.
Yeah, it um I know we're a little behind this year, but I'm going to get busy myself, but um I should be able to get in there.
Okay.
I just didn't just, I just can't do anything before four thirty, basically.
Okay. I'll tell Kimber that whatever meetings we schedule with the budget committee need to be at five P M.
So.
Okay, Casey, other council members?
Yeah, I, you know, I've been doing that for a few years and I like doing it. I'd like to do it, but I uh now plan to travel for the first few weeks in April, so I won't be here.
Okay.
And I will be gone until, yeah, I didn't think about that. I'm I'm gone from my prime this council meeting. I'll be gone from the seventh to the sixteenth of next month. So I wouldn't be any use for half the month.
I'll bond here, Brian.
Sure, okay. Thank you, Chanel.
Kind of waited out, guys.
We could use one or two more. I don't, yeah, Millie, but I'm happy to put it down.
To the first one.
I'm hoping that's what you were saying.
How often is it?
Again, it's for a short period of time, given the fact that we're going to do capital budgets as well. Um, probably a couple of meetings a week for the next several weeks. Okay, all right, so I've got Josh, Casey, Chanel and Millie. Let me see anybody? All right, I'll make sure I pass that on to Kimber. Thank you. And that being said, is there any questions on the memo? Again, I don't need any action from the council tonight, but trying to keep the council up on, it's a complicated and moving target. Well, I would say just this year, but budgets are like that every year.
All right. Moving on to Quok Cruise Access Permit to Use the Graveyard Island Trail.
Um, I have a question. Is ZAT paying us a a little fee to keep the trail maintenance too? I just don't feel comfortable voting as a council if it's just directly benefiting one business without them contributing. I don't know. I know that it's like all in one, but they're going to be benefiting from the hike and brew too, so. I mean, even if it was like ten dollars uh a thing would help with our maintenance of our toilets and the stuff, especially if it's twelve people at a time and that was like a big schedule. And I know that people.
I'd love to discuss it, make a motion. I'd hope to approve the access permit for Quok Port Group, allow excursions to the graveyard island trail.
I had someone do a fight.
Yeah. Open for discussion. So to start and answer your questions, Chanel, there is a charge, um there is a fee on the access permit based on each excursion or each group of twelve people.
Yeah, but that's coming from the cruise line, not from ZAT itself. And I don't know that they're directly benefiting from that. I don't know if if they had approached me uh at TK's at the Craig Inn, I would feel like I would want to contribute something.
Sure.
To Craig besides sales tax, you know, because I have benefit, I would be benefiting from them coming down and using the trail. Because obviously, if it was just pizza and beer, they might come, but obviously they're really signing up for the trail access.
And I don't know what the overall structure of the excursion is. Maybe Jennifer can weigh in on how you see these excursions going and.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. So um it is a two and a half hour tour in total. Um, we will use primarily twelve passenger vans, um with one driver and one tour guide. The um driver will drop the guests off with the tour guide at the trailhead. Uh, the guests will high twist the guy, the driver will pick them up, drop off another group, et cetera. Um, after they leave the trail, they will head to ZAT Pizza for about twenty minutes for a beer tasting and then go back to the port. Um, and to clarify, this is uh the fee would be paid by the Quok guy as as part of the short excursion costing.
Um, why is it, why is it saying ZAT Pizza if it doesn't even sound like they'll be able to try pizza while they're there? Twenty minutes, I don't know if they're going to have pre-baked pizzas.
No. Yeah, no, good question. It does not include pizza. It includes a beer tasting um in a small charcuterie board.
So fifty dollars an excursion, Brian, is that fifty dollars per, it's like some of our now.
Per group.
Per group, yeah.
Yeah, so Mr. Mayor, I ran the math. If we were getting two hundred dollars per, it's two hundred dollars per day. Okay, we just need to do the math real real quick. There's up to, I think, thirteen hundred people that can go on the trail. And if it's thirteen times fifty, I thought it was thirteen times two hundred, it'd be a total of forty eight hundred dollars or three dollars and sixty nine per, three dollars and sixty nine cents per person to use the trail. I I didn't know it was fifty dollars, so that's even less. We got to realize that if it was even two hundred at three dollars and sixty nine cents, that's not going to cover the toilet paper.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say.
Okay, it's not going to cover the extra maintenance. It's not going to cover anything. It is probably, it's not going to do anything. It's going to overburden us and it's, we're going to go backwards. I understand that the Quok Port Group is trying to do something that we we could benefit from, but this, this is not, this is not where we're at.
Is, are you guys charging a set price per passenger for this excursion?
Yes, there is a set price, so feel free to discuss prices.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, absolutely. I was like Josh, I started doing the math of twelve hundred and potentially, you know, fifty people going across the trail and twenty tours. Um, I know we did something like this in Cassan when the small ships were coming in like fifteen years ago and they and they did a price per head, which um, you know, not knowing if you're going to have four excursion, you know, four people per excursion are twelve. Also, are you guys, since you guys are bringing the passengers into Craig, are you going to be paying the city sales tax on the on the fee for, that you're going to be charging for those excursions?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Of course.
Okay.
I don't. Um, I thought we already discussed this once, saying that we didn't want people to be walking around at graveyard, at the grave sites that were there. I know Kathy Peavy has expressed um concern about fees that we're charging or that potentially we could be receiving or charging um be used for specific things like that and beautifying Craig. Um, didn't we talk about this already? Not, not this thing, but that we didn't want people walking through the local grave sites and there would be no control over having people staying on the trail. Would they have a?
Go ahead.
Can I answer that? Yeah, so each group would be um guided by a tour guide that would keep them all together. Um, and we would certainly take guidance on um what we should say and the, like the briefings that we do before passing through the graveyard. We absolutely want to be respectful and want to make sure that we're not, um, we want to be respectful. So we we will keep the groups together. Um, they will be escorted. They'll have communication with our management team if there's any sort of incidents or anything like that. Um, and again, we'll take, we'll take the right of thumb, I'm all content.
With the way it sounds right now, I think that sounds like the people running the excursion and ZAT Pizza, are they going to be the only ones benefiting from this? Because in that two and a half hours, they said it would be the walk on the trail and then twenty minutes to try beer. So that doesn't even give anybody that's on that tour a chance to even probably step outside and look around Craig. So right now, with the fee and everything, it doesn't seem beneficial to me and I don't know how it would be beneficial to Craig in general, besides, I guess, the sales tax.
Yeah, no, no, absolutely. I believe the fee, what she said was um something that can be discussed.
Right.
I think Brian got, did the fee just to throw in a placeholder on on the access permit.
Essentially looking at, you know, the average number of excursions is four, um some days less, some days one more, but generally four excursions per day, even hiring an extra employee to clean bathrooms and make a trip up and down the trail a couple of times to pick up any refuse. Um, it seemed to me two hundred, two hundred fifty dollars a day would cover that. Um, and that's what I was looking to do for uh for the fee, but the the council can certainly suggest a a different fee structure.
Yeah, no, I think for.
Or if the council has different goals that it wants to reach uh in terms of of benefit.
Is there anything as far as the toilets go as far as liability if some major calamity happens, four or forty foot something down there that's not good or whatever, for kids or something?
Mr. Mayor?
I did my cat his hand raising.
Yeah, a couple things.
Well, you know, this goes along with some of the suggestions here on cost. Um, you know, for locals to walk out there, the trail's fine, but if we're going to have that kind of traffic, the trail's going to need a significant upgrade, new D one. There's, you know, there's kind of big cobblestone rocks that stick up there, trip hazards, them have, should come out. Um, so I can see, you know, the city's going to have an investment in that before the first person, first paying customer walks down that or we should have. So that would be one thing. And then the second thing is, is it's, you know, it's the Quok Port Group's business to identify and do business with anybody in Craig that they want to. Um, I would suggest that, you know, to have a document before us that points out one business, when there's other businesses in the same um same line of business, you know, maybe that shouldn't be there. We shouldn't be just talking about the uh, you know, fees for using the trail because we we have no, there's nothing for us. Sales tax comes to us from business use, but it could be from any business use, and so naming a specific business in this scheduling document, I would suggest maybe that's not the best way to, you know, for us, is this community to be looking at this. And they have, they have the freedom to do business with anybody they want.
And to, and really to keep the focus on what the access permit is for, the access permit is not really covering who they're doing business with privately. The access permit, the function of the access permit is to put some guidelines around essentially what is the commercial use of that public trail, right? So that's really what the access permit is doing.
Do we have a, we've got a count up of all the excursions for this coming up year that was on the sheet? Do we know exactly? I know I counted all of them, but was it fifty-six excursions?
I I don't remember. Do you know off the top of your head, Jennifer?
I I don't. Um, I would say average of four a day, twenty-three calls. I don't off the top of my head.
Yeah, a hundred twenty-five, a hundred thirty excursions total over the twenty-three call calls.
About thirteen hundred people.
I'd feel more comfortable if it was at least four hundred per day.
Well, I think of talking of a head tax, we could potentially, you know, bring in, you know, potential set revenue to where it might be appealing maybe to the community. I know we're, there're going to be a lot of people, this trail's highly used, this is going to be a huge uh benefit for um the tour company to be able to take these, their guests down there. They're going to love this trail, it's beautiful. Um, it is going to come with a cost, not only to, um, you might say it's minimal cost for rehabbing the trail, but um it could bring in, you know, revenue, I mean, like thirteen hundred people a time, you know, twenty dollars a head or something like that could could um, you know, be something that could be beneficial to the community um when it comes to that trail. Um, and you guys are doing twenty-some uh tours this year to Quok? Shit.
Yeah, we have twenty-three course of public season.
You guys are talking about maybe sixty next year?
Correct, over fifty next year.
Over fifty next year?
I don't think the idea, but just a head tax, because if there's only, they say there's a minimum of four to go on excursion, so that's only eighty dollars for one excursion, where if we could just keep it and that's not our problem, how many they booked or not booked, we're just concerned with the trail and keeping it maintained for that amount of people and also keeping it still beautiful for our locals to use is more my concern.
So, Mr. Mayor, I I'm thinking about the maintenance part. I know the city hires a part-time person to do the relooking and if it's going to be the same person, he's having a hard time keeping up with what he's doing right now. Does this mean we're going to have to hire another part-time person just to make sure everything's presentable each time or once a day or some have a schedule?
I haven't had that discussion yet with Oliver. Uh, I know he went with a vacant position most of this year that he now has filled. Um, and we do have the two seasonal positions in the facilities department. Uh, he and I have not had a discussion about what he looks at at workload, so my intent was to put some fee in place that I felt would cover um an employee just to work those days, a part-time seasonal employee just to work those days and extra toilet paper and whatever else.
Where's your money for the paper?
If you were doing forty-eight people a day, at forty dollars a head would be nineteen hundred and twenty bucks. At thirteen hundred people a trip, that forty dollars would be fifty-six thousand dollars. At twenty dollars, it'd be, you know, twenty-six thousand dollars. Um, knowing that this is going to be fifty ships, sixty ships coming in next year, if we're looking at extending this uh trail use, I know, we've all know it. It takes a few maintenance things around here and the weather that we get and foot traffic, but also um we had a huge public comment on this last time about putting out a lot of locals and they wanted to see the schedule. Um, I was one of the people who spoke up on this, just knowing that it had to be worth our time. I might as great that they're reaching out and want to come in here and do business in the community, but it's got to be, you know, worth um our community's efforts and um so I just, that's just what I want to put out there, counsel, you know.
One, one second. Jennifer, are you still there?
Yes, I'm here.
So if if the council's able to renegotiate you with a different amount, would we be able to add a drop-off center for the group? Or are you guys on a tight schedule? Meaning like if we could drop them off at at the plaza where most of our businesses, storefront businesses are, is that an option?
Um, yeah, a couple of things. Um, um, this tour as advertised or as described, I guess, is um dock-to-dock for the cruise line. However, if the tour finishes in Craig before, say, an hour and a half or two hours before the ship leaves, guests could stay in town and explore and take the complimentary shuttle back to the port. Um, the other thing, which just developed last week when I was in town, um is that we are looking at developing another tour that uses Jeeps and um I'll send another proposal for this. Um, but we'd like to visit the cannery, make a cannery as a stop on that tour and then allow free time for shopping in that area. Um, we have looked at the shuttle buses going down there and I'll, I'll try again this summer, but it just doesn't seem safe for the larger buses buses to get into that area. So um I promise that I'm working on some other options um that will bring guests to more businesses in town. Um, and I just want to put a little plug in that anyone who is interested in working with us, please email info@quokisland.com and um we're happy to to look at all options. It's any private business.
I'm just going to, so that we don't get bogged down on it, I was going to bring this other proposal up as well and get the council's feel on that, but uh probably better if we take care of one of the, one access permit at a time.
Yes, we will put that.
Yes, thank you.
Yes, yes. We'll put that on our agenda so other people can.
I feel okay with throwing like a hundred dollars per excursion fee, which would make with an average of four excursions per day, that would make four hundred dollars per day for Craig. If we did it per head at forty dollars. If we did it per head at $40, you could do 12 times 40, which is 480. But if you only did four times 40, that would be 160. So I feel like this way it would average out better. And I feel like that would help us be able to maintain. And if more excursions get added on, we're getting at least $100 per excursion instead of just 50. And that will help with any growing costs that come with this first trial. I will make the motion if anybody else feels comfortable. If not, I will leave it live.
No, I feel comfortable with that. I don't know if we really have to do the numbers so much. I mean, shouldn't we look and see what they're charging each, each client?
I mean, that's, that's their business.
Yeah.
That's their benefit, you know, they're, they're, they're looking for us. This is, if I was in this business, I'd be finding out how much it's gonna cost me. I'm gonna add my percentage and then try to sell it to my guests on the cruise ship. So they're just starting here. They need to know probably as soon as possible to try to sell these things.
So there's the motion on the floor to approve the access permit is written. So an appropriate motion to amend the amount listed. Sorry, under section. Make sure I've got the right piece of paper in my hand.
I didn't, no. I said I would do.
Yeah. So a motion to amend section six to make it $50 per crew, or make it $100 per crewed excursion.
I don't know if I'm able to share anything, but since it will double again next year with the amount of cruises that we get. Has anybody thought about putting a time limit on this? Because we do have lots of.
Well, the access permit's only good until end of September.
No, during the day. Because we do have members that would like to go see their loved ones that are deceased before it is dusk when you can no longer be in the support. And it's all summer. I mean, it's from the middle of May to the end of September. It's an entire summer.
And in the cruise line's defense, it's, it's some of that is hard to do because their port calls aren't all scheduled the same, right? Some shit, the ships don't come in and leave at the same time each day. So they're scheduling their excursions around the times that the ships are in port.
So if we think that $10,400 is gonna cover the cost of the maintenance of the trail and the toilet paper, as is what we would make at $100 per excursion for the three, three months of access.
I, personally, I do not. I, 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 I see the bigger pie here and that's, that's probably the next one. But right now, you're probably $3,000 or $4,000 in rock rehabilitation. I know that the budget committee wants to say that there is no dollar for the day amount for our facilities, but there is a cost daily. Then the TLC and everything at the wa, you know, water sewage is all gonna add up.
I just see this being very popular, so I'm a gambler.
What's the purpose of our trail?
That's my question.
I know I did reach out to one of our family members that put the, the total poll out there and he is not concerned of anything. He stated that he was only worried in the first year and as fast a year that no vandalism happened.
Like I said, I'm a little bit of a gambler. If I think there's gonna be 12 people there and I could potentially make, you know, 26 to 50,000 this year, then three times the amount next year could, you know. I, I do these excursions. I, I go on these trails, the Holly Aqua Trail every time in Hawaii. You know, so, so, so I, these are big things and I pay a pretty penny for them. There's also with the burrows and all that stuff across there, there's a lot of taxes and luxury taxes that come along that we don't charge here, so I guess if.
Also, this permit is only till September, so this is only a one-time thing. So next year we can always adjust it when they reapproach, if they reapproach us with something like this. So I thought that's a, a good $100 per excursion, I guess, if it was a good starting point for those months. Is it possible to ask the cruise lines in good faith to pay for half the rock to maintain the trail this year? Anything's possible. It's a good suggestion. Could I help them show their commitment to keeping our community nice and then cover our initial cost?
A couple of thoughts. A, I think that's a good suggestion. I think that there's, you know, there's example in other communities where the cruise ships, you know, have huge presence where they do do a lot of maintenance and upkeep and, and work with the community. So I think that that's a very appropriate suggestion. The one thing I do like about what I, what I see here is, you know, these numbers are not, you know, they're not extreme, four to 12 people on a trip. You know, these people are, you know, they're, I don't see there where they're gonna be a significant, you know, create issues or anything. There's, it's a small number, that's not a big number. I am comfortable with the number that Chanel, Chanel has suggested. And then the last thing I wanted to follow up on, which I already heard an allusion to, and I would, I would almost say that we, we could, if not tie that into this permit, we should strongly encourage, I would like to see them just take a few 12, 12-passenger vans and bring people to Craig and let them wander. Last summer, when the ships were here, we clearly seen people just wandering around the community, going into different businesses and stuff. Some people are gonna have that interest and that would be a way to spread the benefit around a broader basis in our community. You know, to have, like, every hour have a 12-passenger van or a 16-passenger van, whatever they want to operate with, making rotational trips just between downtown Craig and, and the, you know, the port. I think that's a very appropriate way to support our community.
Mr. Mayor, I know last year they did have buses that dropped people off at the CTA. And at that time, the manager said there was no significant increase in sales from those people. That was notable.
So it's CTA, but I mean.
Right.
People, you know, you have different businesses in town. They can go into, you know, one of our, you know, food and drinking establishments, JT Brown's, Law Cabin. There's numerous shops at the, you know, down by the Alaska gift and things like that. So there isn't a number of things that could benefit. It doesn't have to be huge. A continuous presence, even if it's modest, would help these businesses and help our community.
Also, those ships that came down last year, we were one of the last stops. So they had done a lot of their shopping already, so.
Yes, the, the bigger ports, you know, they got those stores that they're, that they're looking for. I know 15 years ago when we were doing this in another small community, this was one of the biggest hits for the tourist companies. They were getting $85 a head to the community for walking the trail. At $40 a head on one excursion, that's $640. That's way more significant than 100 and not too big of a reach for a tour company to be able to have this benefit in the community. It might sound like a lot, but at four people on each excursion, that's $640, that's your worst-case scenario. I mean, so I think we might be leaving a little bit of meat on the table for $100 an excursion when you could be making, you know, up to, you know, potentially, I mean, that, that, that's what it's here for. That's what it's here for, is to benefit the community. And, you know, they're getting a part of our community, they're taking, I mean, there's a lot of people who sit up and are adamant about that trail. We can, if it's not too big, you know, too much of an ask for the tour company, you know.
I'll help you. I move to amend number six to $40 per head.
What about if you have $40 per head but a minimum of $100? Actually, that would be less.
$40 per head. And then I'll put you on a different. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, up for discussion.
Okay, we should have just left the 50 and crossed out per excursion fee to per head. And left it at $50 per head instead of 40. So I move to amend it, it's set at 40 to 50 per head.
Okay, so from a Robert's Rules perspective, here we are.
You gotta vote on the first.
Not necessarily, because this is changing the amendment. Chanel can make what's called a second level amendment, which would to amend Josh's amendment from 40 to $50 per person. That, that's how we would handle it. So if that's what you want to see Chanel, that would be the way to do it, is to amend Josh's amendment from $40 per person to $50 per person.
Okay, I amend council's amendment. We went from 40 per head to 50. Second.
And then that will need to be voted on. And then it goes back to voting on Josh's amendment, either as originally stated or as amended if the new amendment, if the second amendment passed. Okay, open for discussion for the $50 a head.
So I have a question to clarify this then. So as I'm looking at number six here, $50 per excursion is one trip of 12 people going out to travel back. So that comes out to over $4 a person if there's 12 people.
Right.
And we're suggesting, what was your number?
40.
40 a person.
Per person.
And minus 50 a person.
So 40, I, I just did the bigger number. I did it daily for the group breakdown. I, I imagine it's, it's, it's 480.
Yeah.
It's hard to sell to a group.
So $480 would be the, the average at 12 people per excursion.
Did you just say you're paying 85 a head to in the sand?
Well, I wasn't gonna say where, but yeah, go ahead.
Well, we all don't wear. Let's just drop the veil over here. So if they're willing to pay 85, I know she's trying to talk, but I have something to say. So if they're willing to pay 85 per head somewhere, I don't think 50 is too much to ask. Especially with all the royalties and all the things and people aren't excited about people being on the trail and all these dust till dawns. I just say, they could say no and not use our trail.
Yeah, so, um, thank you. I, I'm not sure where the 85 per head came from. I would say in general, fees that we pay in other areas and other trails range from seven to eight dollars per person, maybe to 15, or a per day rate of $500. At the 40, 50, 85 per head, we would need to find a different trail to use because we would not be able to cover our costs if the fee is to that high.
There is no other trail.
I guess the last thing. Do you know when they need this answer by?
I don't know when what?
They need the answer by?
Oh.
It seems possible.
It seems possible.
We can delay the meeting if you need it.
So the next meeting won't be for another two weeks? Okay.
Yeah, I, I think 40 or 50 is, you know, I, I could just, I anticipated that that was gonna be probably.
And, and the fact of the matter is if a van drops 12 people off at the trailhead, it's a public trail.
I had the floor.
I'm sorry, my apologies.
I anticipated that that was, you know, pristine. I would like to, I think 40 is probably more than reasonable. We can increase that. I would like to suggest that whatever number we come to, we also find a way to, we work with the cruise company to do as Josh has suggested and asked them to do or require them to do a, you know, significant maintenance on the trail, which it needs. They can cover the cost of that start up, start with upfront so that this daily passenger fee, we won't have to bear that burden coming out of this passenger fee. That will kind of help alleviate the, you know, the pressure to have a higher fee a little bit. Then we're just some thoughts to have.
Um, I, can I say something again? Do you leave it to that?
Yep.
Um, so there is a head tax that is paid to the state of Alaska and, and to each port community that the cruise lines visit. So there is a fund that we request funding from to help with those sorts of projects. And I can find that for you and send it to Brian to help you facilitate that, that portion of this conversation.
Would that zoom out to us? The port is in, in Craig?
I know that money is significant that you were talking about. We've talked rather than AML, but the port is in Kewalk with, you know, Craig, City of Craig would be eligible for those funds.
They are, but then a, a portion of that goes to the state that then can be used by other communities, yes.
I'll just go back to the $100 for excursion.
They'll pay up to $500. That's a $24,000 a year for the access to the trail. Nobody liked the $10,000 for the three months, didn't think that was gonna cut it. But that's totally up you guys. Having an amendment or the amendment to the amendment are gonna get really good today.
Current discussion is $50 per person.
And what are you subtracting out for maintenance?
So why don't we just vote on that and vote it down or vote it up? So then that way it's not, we're not just stacking on top of it.
Any more discussion on the $50 per person, 40, $40 per person?
Maybe we do in person?
No, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, you're right, Casey. It is, it started at 40 and then 50, okay? So 50 is on the table.
All right.
I'm losing track here.
Voice out there with this, it's about my age, we do roll call.
Voice, voice votes.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
All right. Two days and 40, so.
So it did not have four affirmative votes.
Yep.
So the amendment to make it $50 fails. Now we're back to Josh's amendment to make it $40 per person.
Any discussion on $40 per person?
I just have one question. And without knowing, on these days, we're gonna have to have an extra garbage pickup. We're gonna have to have someone clean it and we're gonna have to have maintenance at least a day or two before each of these. Without knowing the cost of that, how are we voting on an, on an amount?
That's what I said. What about your maintenance?
It doesn't make sense to vote on an amount when we don't know what costs we're going to incur for having these excursions. What if this is costing us money?
for having these excursions. One of this is costing us money.
That's why we're giving him a permit only for a couple of months and seeing how it goes. Cause I guess you can't really, unless you wanna nickel and dime it to death and they not answer.
I, I think, Mr. Mayor, I think we need to look at it as a different. Let's look at it at a whole number. What do you, what is your number for from May to September? And you, I would have to say that everything that you guys just said is about ten thousand dollars. Water, sewer, garbage maintenance. Eight, eight to ten, somewhere in there. So what's our number? You know, so do we end up with fifteen and we, we make five this year? Do we go twenty and make ten? You know, cause that's, that's where we're at. And as a business standpoint, I, I think this is great. As a community member, no way. Um, but business is business. And we need to, we need to make sure that, that if we're putting ten thousand dollars in, that, that we're gonna get a couple of years out of that, that money. We can't just spend that money this year and not get it through the next couple of years. So forty, forty dollars a head is, I think it's twenty-six thousand dollars if they have full. No, no, it's a lot more than that.
Fifty-two.
Yeah, that's where I, I came up with the numbers forty and twenty at the beginning, um, just knowing. Um, I mean, if you're doing extra garbage pickups and our garbage drivers are driving down there, I mean, I mean, we pay fifty percent fringe and then you're, you're adding that on to your run, so I mean, it's, yeah, whatever you guys think that is, uh, a good idea for the community, work. Five hundred dollars an excursion is twenty-four thousand dollars, correct?
Yeah.
That's our breaking down of the round. Look, I know once this excursion gets off, this is gonna be here to have one of those beautiful trails in southeast. And Craig is a beautiful community. So you also gotta keep in mind.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I guess I have one question for you. Has SSI removed the, the road block there? Cause that's one thing that, there's gonna be congestion. We already have congestion and now we're gonna be adding more. Um, I would hope that SSI has either removed or moved it back to where the sewage plant starts.
We, we, we had talked with them about it. I'm not sure quite if I haven't been down there in a little while, but it would definitely open up discussion. They're definitely open to, um, uh, opening the fence during the day. And, you know, are moving the fence back. We also discussed with, with SSI to the head of the road, um, on, uh, to the sewage plant. So no further discussion has been made since we met with the president and.
I think that, that's gonna be another, you know, that's another hurdle. Even if this was to move forward, we, as a community, we already have the pains.
Yeah. And that would be a whole nother hurdle to step over with, right away, easements and liability. The motion on the floor is for forty dollars a head. Any more discussion? All those in favor? Okay, all those opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright.
So that takes the council back to the original motion, which is approval of the access permit as presented.
The amendment was two hundred dollars.
I don't, no, I don't remember.
No, I never made that amendment.
You never made that amendment?
I just said if people were.
Yeah.
Liked it, but I would amend it, but if not, then just leave it. I mean, a hundred, if it's four excursions a day, that's four hundred. But if it's six, which there are some, that's six hundred a day. Doesn't bring us to a very big number of twenty-four port calls, but.
I have an idea. I move to table this discussion till April third.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed?
Aye.
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 It's gonna be dealt with today.
Okay.
Would it be too much of an ask for a five hundred dollar a day excursion rate compared to a fifty dollar a day? I mean.
About one fifty per excursion fee at four. Excursions a day, that's. Can't do math right now.
That's two thousand dollars a day or twenty-five hundred dollars a day depending if they have four or five excursions a day. Depending on, no matter how many people that they bring. They said that they pay up to five hundred dollars in excursion in other communities. This isn't other communities. This is Prince of Wales Island. This is Craig, Alaska. This isn't Ketchikan. This isn't Juneau. This isn't Sitka. They have the ability to come off on the small shore ships and that's what the customers want. That's why there's gonna be sixty ships a day coming in next year. And they'll be bigger vessels. Last year it was two hundred, or four hundred to seven hundred. This year it's seven hundred to twelve hundred. So. And we're looking forward to the sales tax and so on and so forth, but when this gets out, we're all gonna be getting our houses, probably not toilet paper or eggs. Probably gonna be moss and seaweed or something that they can get on the beach, but. Those are so expensive right now, but.
We can get it out of my yard.
Baseball field. We have a motion just in there.
So you're, just to understand, your suggestion is a hundred dollars per excursion?
Mine was suggesting five hundred dollars per excursion.
Oh.
Which is, they say they pay up to five hundred dollars per excursion. This was.
You know, it was five hundred dollars per day.
Oh, per day? Oh, five hundred dollars per day?
Per day.
Okay.
So, so one hundred dollars per excursion would be four hundred dollars a day.
Yeah.
Except that they have a bigger amount of people coming in in different areas.
No, they don't. Or not on ours. Not on this government.
Six or excursions.
Yeah, there's some days that there's six excursions, so that could be six or. So it could average out to a five hundred dollar a day, kinda like what we're asking. We also won't have to have this discussion again later, so we didn't table it. And it's five months. We make, what is it? Twelve thousand dollars a day.
Well, that's not possible, because we have to subscribe. It costs. Cause we don't know them.
All I'm saying is we're leasing our trail out from eight AM to five PM for the whole summer.
So what do we do with other people that are walking out there?
That's what I'm saying. They already said that they're not gonna be locking the trail. They're gonna be, you know, give them a, give them a calendar, you know, so this is just for the dates that they're coming in. So they, you know, June eighth, June thirteenth, June third, um, and, you know, goes on like that, so. Yes. When this is all said and done, um, that's about the schedule, you know, you got June seventeenth. So every ten days to every three to four days, sometimes there's a ship. And so, so.
The access permit is not an exclusive use agreement either, so this does not, the trail is not blocked off these days.
I'm not saying it's blocked off, no, no. I'm saying we had strong, uh, discussion with the community here. Last time this access permit was brought up. And they were looking for this schedule exactly, if the community was. So I was actually surprised. Let's see down here in public, right? Or Mike, you know, make a motion, try to, I'll make a motion if we attract one hundred dollars per excursion, maximum of twelve passengers per excursion. With the understanding that right name here. So, you know, the Coop Port Group will work with the city of Craig to complete maintenance in the trail prior to use of this, um, usage beginning. And I'm not, well, let's just do one. I'll just say a hundred dollars per excursion. I'll leave my motion at one hundred dollars per excursion.
Can we just do that?
Do we have a second?
Second.
More discussion?
What I would say on this is this is the learning curve for us, where obviously we, we, we're all sitting here struggling. This is one season, twenty, is it twenty-four or twenty-six?
Twenty-one.
Twenty-four. That's not a huge number. It's not like every day we'll get through it. I think we do need to post the days that the trail will be occupied. It should be out there so that, you know, all the locals have the ability to see it. We can put it on our website, things like that. Make it very clear which days you anticipate people being out there. Um, this is for one, one season. As I said, this is a learning curve that we can readjust going forward.
Yeah, any more discussion? All those in favor?
Yeah. Aye.
All those opposed? Or none? Hopefully, um, you have to grab Mike.
Yeah, so what I'd like to, what I didn't wanna, I was gonna get the motion way too complicated, but I, I think that, uh, we need to figure out how to redo maintenance on that trail prior to the, these excursions beginning. Uh, the state fund, you know, I'm not familiar with all this stuff, but if there's a fund that we can access and, uh, um, it's the Coop Port Group can help us figure out how to do that, or, you know, our, our staff here can figure out how to do that. I think that we, you know, that's where we should go. Otherwise, I, uh, you know, I would strongly encourage the Coop Port Group to take that upon themselves.
Absolutely. I think, um, those funds are, could be greatly beneficial to the community that was brought up because those have been talked about and that's, um, that could be a big contribution to the community. So hopefully we can get some help on applying for those funds as soon as possible.
Will we consider it, boy?
Our, is our lease, is our leases, um, I mean, at some point in time throughout these excursions, if they're not working out the way that we are, there's this to lease and we're done for, you know, we're signing it for four months and then we realize we're into two months and we just spent an extra thirty thousand dollars keeping up with the tourism. Is this, is there anything in the contract or in our lease agreement or?
There's a site, there's a motion for prohibitive environmental compliance required.
Yeah, we're, the access permits generally don't contain a termination clause since they're short.
We're in it for the summer.
We could put one in. I don't know if that would be acceptable, obviously.
Well, I was, I was just asking. I wasn't sure if there was something that was, um, there's not one currently in the access. That was something that the city normally doesn't have access for.
Josh had the question.
Go ahead. Did you, I, I was counting what you guys did here. Did, was that amend, amended to?
No, I was gonna make it too difficult. I said the flat, the flat fee. Then my, my suggestions are, we need to work with the, you know, the Coop Port Group on this state stream of funding that may be available to us if it is. And see if we can access, you know, some thousands of dollars to redo the trail. That would be one thing I would strongly encourage. Um, and then the second thing I would like to encourage, you alluded to it and I did too, is I, I would like to see them just have a rotational man coming into Craig and letting people wander.
Oh, absolutely. Um, I, I think as this grows, I think it's gonna be like herding cats. In these communities, that there's gonna be people starting to rent their own cars. There's gonna be people venturing out. They're gonna have different tours. I know this is all new to us and I think, uh, especially our restaurants. Um, I, all of them are gonna benefit down the road on this. It's gonna be us, up, up to the community to decide what it wants to look like. Um, maybe down there at the cannery point, um, to create more revenue. Um, cause that is the one potential site that you can get people in there to, to drop some money, so. So we can ask for donations every time we come down. Support a kids' basketball team. But, no, right, so pass, um, for a hundred dollars, um, access permit.
So the original motion still needs to be voted on to approve the access permit?
No, okay. I'm pushing through the access permit for a hundred dollars, but, um, mostly to approve the access permit. Ask the amendment hundred dollars.
Can we move to approve the?
It's already, there's a motion already.
Okay.
Oh, I thought that's what we approved last time.
That's why I was wondering if you made amendment, cause I made a.
Okay, alright.
To start the process.
Yeah.
That's why I was confused. I was like, I was trying to count as fast as possible.
And so council is now voting on the original motion made by Josh to approve the access permit as amended, which changes the fee to one hundred dollars per excursion.
Which serves a hundred excursions.
No. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright. So it passes.
So, uh, Jennifer did mention that, um, uh, just a couple of days ago, she sent me an email really briefly outlining that they're also interested in doing, um, bringing up to eighteen passengers per excursion um, to the cannery point. I don't have much other details on this. Um, these access permits can be signed by me administratively, but obviously there's a lot of different, uh, thoughts. And, um, so I'm happy to bring that back to the council at the next meeting, unless you would like me to approve one administratively for some excursion on the cannery property. So if you wanna have this discussion about a different excursion, excursion at the next meeting, that's kind of the plan that Jennifer and I have.
Public notice, so I can be able to advertise it so people can come in and publicly speak on. That would be beneficial to the community at least, given that consideration.
And we will put it on the agenda for the April third meeting.
Alright, moving on to Beth Clark's retirement celebration.
Uh, that should've just been under correspondence.
It's, well, it's on the list. It's on the list. Okay, we'll knock that one off. Moving on to the four twenty pot stop taxation discussion.
Uh, are, is this discussion or are we looking for a motion?
Just discussion.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I completely agree with the very last sentence of Mrs. Coates's statement.
I don't. I think it's comparing a grocery store and a restaurant.
I don't, I see it as syntax and I think they should be the same.
Same?
Personally, that's how I see it.
Shame.
So the process for that, uh, just looking at that part of the whole thing, right now marijuana is kind of a split tax. So marijuana has a five percent tax regardless of the sales tax rate. And then sales tax is charged on each marijuana sale. So until recently, that's been a five percent sales tax and a five percent marijuana tax. With the recent change approved by the voters to change the sales tax rate to six and seven percent, depending on the time of year, that effectively makes the sales tax rate for marijuana, um, eleven or twelve percent, depending on what time of the year it is. So, um, the discussion gets a little bit complicated because, uh, while the council can reduce the sales tax rate, um, we've made a commit to the school district for a difference in sales tax paid. So there would have to be some discussion of if, if the council wanted to charge a lower sales tax rate, um, what we would do about making the school payment. The, the more, um, the more accurate way to cap the marijuana tax total would be to reduce the marijuana. the more accurate way to cap the marijuana tax total would be to reduce the marijuana tax rate. So to take the five percent marijuana tax rate and reduce it to four percent part of the year and three percent other parts of the year. That's how you would keep it capped at ten percent total. Right?
Does this have to go to the voters?
Reducing it does not have to go to the voters. Increasing it would. So the council can, by ordinance, reduce the marijuana tax. The council can't go above what the voters have approved as the cap. And so the alcohol, the suggestion about alcohol tax, that would, that would require either a citizen initiative or a council ordinance to place a ballot, a ballot question on the ballot in October to allow for an increase to the alcohol tax, which right now is set at six percent. That's the highest alcohol tax that we can charge without voter approval.
And that one doesn't fluctuate with the seasonal tax?
It does not.
No, cause it used to, it was always usually higher than sales tax.
From comparison, Prince of Wales marijuana shops are grossly more expensive than Ketchikan, Juneau and other communities in southeast Alaska. So I don't know if that's costing them more to grow their pot here locally than it is compared to the other ones. Um, or they're just make, potentially making a bigger profit.
I mean, uh, our grocery stores, liquor store stuff, all of our stuff gets barged up here and we have to pay that shipping fee. Where the marijuana industry, they have to personally go get it because they can't ship it through anything. So they can save money on that by using Alaska Airlines credit cards and Alaska Airlines miles to pay for people to transport it. So where in other businesses, they don't get that break.
Mr. Mayor, ultimately also to keep in mind, since we're in budget season, that any changes to the tax rates have a negative impact on revenue projections.
If, if, if we take a percentage off of the marijuana tax on the city side, we're just cutting our own budget. So, and there's one shop, there's more than one shop in town. We haven't, you know, maybe the other shops that month had a little more sales. Maybe it's the middle of winter and nobody has a lot of money to, you know, buy pot. So maybe their funds are just down a little bit more, but.
Can we push this off the committee and see what the budget committee comes up with?
Yeah, this is just an informational thing. Things like that. We don't need to make a decision on this.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question on this. Well, I have been under the impression that the marijuana tax was a flat ten percent. So this is, you know, you know, I obviously wasn't aware of the split, the way that works. Is it possible to keep our marijuana taxes a separate tax and keep it a flat rate? You know, just one rather than have a split in it? How, how is calculated?
I think so. That's really a technical question. That's the way that alcohol tax in Alaska works. Is the alcohol tax rate is generally set at a rate separate from sales tax. Um, I don't know if that's allowed for marijuana tax as a use tax. It would have to, regardless, it would have to go to the voters.
So the short-term solution, if we wanna keep it steady at ten, would be to do the reduction as you suggested?
Yeah, yes, probably. Again, I would have to, I think that would be allowed, right? So that would be similar to when fuel prices were so high and we reduced just the sales tax rate on fuel. Here, the council would have to pass an ordinance to reduce the tax rate on marijuana.
Seasonally.
I don't think you could do it seasonally.
Well, I think if we, if we don't do it seasonally, just drop two percent while the seasonality's up, then it goes down to eight unless the code goes back to ten.
Basically, we have a year-round tax increase of one percent and then a seasonal one for May to September, another percent. So basically, do we wanna make the marijuana district, they're exempt from the school sales tax because what we're doing is we're taking, plus is going a hundred percent to the school.
Not, not the marijuana tax.
The, the, the one to two percent that they're tacking on to their marijuana is going a hundred percent to the school. So we're telling all the other businesses that had to pay the one to two percent increase in the community for a hundred percent for the school that was voted by the people of the community, that they're exempt from a one percent on their marijuana and year-round and another one percent when all the tourists are in here at the marijuana shops.
Yeah, and I'm not sure how the marijuana tax works, but, um, just with the liquor sale tax, like, so everything that I sell that's liquor, it goes into that, but everything like my shirts or the food and anything like that go into the sales tax thing, so.
The same, the same is true of marijuana shops.
Yeah.
So marijuana is sold at one tax rate, but T-shirts or hats or whatever are generally sold at the regular sales tax rate.
So not everything is being sold at that huge tax rate too?
Well, bring this up in a different time.
Alright.
So is, is there something that the council would like us to bring back to the next meeting or not?
Thank you, Matt. Yeah. Yeah. Council comments? Motion to adjourn.
No, I, I, go, go ahead, Mike. Your first, yeah.
The, uh, advisory, the local, the Craig Fish Game Advisory Committee had a meeting down in CTA. They have a really good audio system in their meeting room down there. Clinton he, they have this little device that sits in the middle of the table. They call it an owl. I'm just bringing that up to share, he said they have terrific, you know, they capture things from all over the room. Uh, I'm sure they don't, he, they were, you know, suggesting it, so they would be happy to tell us more about it. It might be something that could help us with our, you know, collecting audio or capturing audio better. I just wanted to bring that up. And then, uh, seeing as how we were talking about buildings in the, the city owns and what to do with them and switching usage and stuff like that. Something that's been on my mind for a while and I thought tonight would be a good, good time to just bring it up is, you know, we have this clinic building up here, the old clinic building. I know there's some covenants on it. I'm not gonna suggest anything with the building. I would like to learn more about the covenants. Maybe we could have a report on the covenants that go with that building in the next, uh, our next meeting.
I can find, my understanding of the building has always been that it has to be used. There has to be a medical tie to its use or it reverts back to the state of Alaska.
I'm pretty sure all those pieces, they're probably gonna be doctors. Come on. There's a loophole somewhere.
Yeah, or we buy out of this thing for five bucks.
I'd like to just know what are the covenants on it and that would help us maybe determine what we might wanna do with it in the future.
Absolutely, that's great. That's it. Suggestions?
I, I think everyone saw what happened tonight with our trail. It's coming, no matter what we do. There's, there's room to be open here if people wanna get creative, you know, maybe see if the city's willing to open up some permits for people to set up stands at the ballpark, you know? There, you know, we're gonna have, now they want down here at the cannery, we just gotta realize how much we're giving away.
Yeah, and we had that discussion with them last year, that starting a logging show down there to where basically opening up booths into communities. And they said they weren't interested at that time. There's other, other businesses that are contacting them this year, just recently, last month or so. They said they're not interested at this time. So like you said, we don't need, we don't wanna sell our community short. It is a privilege for these guys to come here. We have a beautiful community. And they will pay. Uh, they, you know, so. Motion to adjourn. There's no more comments.
To adjourn. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No. Go put some bulletproof glass up in my house. Yeah, I'm gonna be your shot.